I call this meeting to order. This is a commission meeting of November 21st, 2023 at 6:00 PM in the Sussex County Administrative Center in our Commissioner, in their Commissioner Meeting Room on One Spring Street in Newton, New Jersey. No call, please.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Here.
Commissioner Hayden?
Here.
Commissioner Space?
Here.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Here.
Director Carney?
Here. On the freeze, a moment of silence and a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Or as our public statement pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, P.L. 1975, at a quick notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, P.L. 1975, has been made by regular mail and email, such notice being submitted on January 4th, 2023, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following: New Jersey Herald and the Star Ledger. It is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. This time, please mute all electronic devices. All right. Five is approval of the agenda. We have three changes to tonight's agenda. The first that we will be adding in an executive session tonight, discuss relegation of policies. In addition, we'll be tabling two items from the agenda. First is the proclamation recognizing the 2023 Municipal Alliance Volunteer of the Year, and the second is Item 14B. Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Commissioner Space, seconds. Mr. Hayden moves. Any discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Staying carries. Number six, Proclaimations, Certificates and Presentations. We have one presentation from Mr. James Hoffman.
It won't amplify your voice, it's just gonna record what you're saying. Yes, it doesn't amplify.
Hi, my name is Sandy Scher, I'm retired engineer. I've lived in Newton about 50 years, and for the past 30 years, I've given up my neighbor. I'm a retired teacher from Newton School System, and for about 30 years, 31 years, I was a teacher there, and he was my son's sixth grade STEM teacher. And I know his son, who passed out, who was a athlete, and his son is now a doctor. So I would like to introduce you to me here, and why I'm here. We're two of the trustees of five member boards of the corporations who do it. And what we're doing is different, we have to date, we're both in kind of a company, and Detroit is a county that I think was a little bit too hot.
I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Christina Marks and Linda Villa for giving me a chance to give them this. Good evening. At Newton, I coached our Newton First varsity Robotics Team for 13 years. We were and are a multiple award-winning competition team, and one of 3,500 first robotics teams who compete globally. I was able to guide the team to the international final, first in Atlanta, twice in St. Louis, and two more times, most recently in Houston, a total of five times. The First Robotics Program offers students the opportunity to solve problems, collaborate, design, broadcast, make change, engage legislators, and offer community service. Our school district provided a $1,500 starting stipend to allow me to conduct this program. However, we found that a team would need to fundraise $50,000 each year to purchase parts and equipment and pay for the registrations at the local and the regional levels. And if we were fortunate enough to make it to the international level, ship our robot and travel to Houston. As the coach, I worked all year long, and my successor coaches still do, to fundraise and obtain grants to cover the cost of the fitness. In short, Newton's program thrives because of the generosity of our STEM partners. Newton's founding STEM partner and still current sponsors, Pikatini Arsenal, and other partners include Thor Labs, Myroplastics, Eroda Controls, Reneco, MakeFern, Tech Flex, and Johnson Industries, and along with many other local firms and other individuals. Our First Robotics students have earned scholarships, internships, and have moved to highly regarded college engineering programs and area STEM careers. So why are we here today? My goal now in retirement is to see that these opportunities continue and expand by helping foster and develop a nonprofit community makerspace called Aperture Fabricate. We intended to act as a centrally-located resource for all Sussex County school technology educators. In case you're not familiar with the term makerspace, it's simply a shared co-working space where members, users gather to develop and create and work with industrial-grade tools, software, and hand tools of all. Aperture Fabricate's primary objective will be serving the youth in grades 5 through 12, not only in each level of First Robotics Programs, but also in other similar organized programs. A secondary goal of our facility will be attracting adult members looking to develop their own ideas and hobbies. A recognized benefit of makerspace is the social interaction and learning among people with different skill levels, levels of skill, and I've seen this firsthand in our STEM lab each year as our students come together and create a team and build a robot. These hands-on educational and team-building opportunities have been recognized by our local and national manufacturing and technology firms. Our Newton Robotics funding partners have continued to support that team because we've been able to show them our successful outcomes for the students involved. We know that our funding partners in Aperture Fabricate will be looking for that same ROI. Therefore, we'll be seeking, we will be seeking commitments of interest from schools and the county as we go into the calendar year 2024, a process we've already started. By using a central location and shared equipment, the cost to each school program of providing these opportunities will be a small percentage of the Newton's program's cost. A school can arrange to use a space for a team in any of the organized programs, and it can also be one or more open teams in the space made up of young people from industry. I mentioned our founding STEM partner and still current sponsor, the 14-year-old First Robotics Team is Pikatini Arsenal. We recently learned that the Department of Defense also has just issued a preliminary endorsement for the college-level robotics program at Sussex County Community College. We believe we can work with Pikatini and the D.O.B. to help deepen their relationship with Sussex County Community College program. We're here tonight to inform you of the enterprise and its current status. We're not seeking any financial or operational assistance from the county. However, as a nonprofit organization, we may be looking for recognition and perhaps some administrative guidance as we will be seeking government-based grants. To wrap up, here's where we stand right now, and this is reflected in the packet that we were receiving. Aperture Fabricate has incorporated, and we are awaiting IRS designation as a nonprofit. We have a 6,000-square-foot space lined up in Sparta. We expect to open the doors with a summer camp program in the summer of 2024. Three valuable donated industrial tools are waiting shipping once we have the space secured with the lease being signed. Our generous donors have already committed to provide sufficient funds to cover the leased space. We're starting to reach out to them for further commitments and are exploring grant opportunities. We're preparing our website. Last month, we made a presentation to the Sussex County School District Superintendent's at their monthly superintendent's roundtable meeting conducted at the college. A preliminary outline of our goals for next school years provided in your handout via the Sussex School Superintendents. We're asking STEM teachers to review the attached materials and reach out to us with their thoughts, questions, advice, suggestions, and so on. We're glad to reach out to the Sussex County Chamber of Commerce at the start of 2024, and hopefully, as we move forward, you'll allow us to stop in from time to time to offer any updates as we move along. And of course, you can reach us through the emails. And don't hesitate to call if you have any thoughts on this. So thank you very much. I'm sorry to add to your burden for the time. I give you a whole lot of credit. We read through the agenda, there's so many pages, a lot of stuff, so thanks for giving us this opportunity.
Does any question, have any questions before we?
No, I just want to say it sounds like you're enjoying your retirement and relaxing.
So in about two weeks, my little grandson will be two years old, and he's really what my hidden agenda is for August, because I feel like it's really important to give back to the area of New York, so that's what I put on August. So to have an old plan plays out, we just wanted to keep you with a note and give you an opportunity to have thoughts and suggestions and ideas, you're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you and good luck. All right, moving on. Number seven, a public hearing, there is none. Number eight, it's a public session from the floor. This public session, for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item, please line up your microphone and state your name, municipality, and agenda and topic for the record. Motion to open the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Space, any discussion? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Staying carries. Is there anybody in the public who would like to make a comment on agenda topics? All right. Motion to close the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Commissioner Hayden, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Close. Staying carries. Number nine, it's Commissioner's comments. Commissioner Hayden, would you like to start?
I'll start with the financial. We've been working on the budget, we've been working on the capital budget, we're well ahead and below what we were last year, and things are looking good, and we are still doing our due diligence with the operating budget. And we should have that buttoned up, I think, this year, a lot earlier than last year. Yay.
Agreed.
Yay.
Was that it?
That's it. I'm not...
Short and sweet.
I know what you were gonna say.
I...
Commissioner Space.
Division of Social Services, the 16th Annual Stuff the Bus Food Drive to benefit the Sussex County Social Services Food Pantry was a huge success. iHeart Media, 103.7 WNNJ, 102.3 WSUS, and 106.3 The Bear hosted the food drive over this past weekend at the Lakeland Bank in Sparta and at the Franklin, Sparta, Byram, Newton, and Sussex ShopRite locations. Local police departments also participated at various locations to cram the cruiser with donations during this community effort. The County of Sussex is extremely grateful to our community for their generosity during these economically challenging times. The community's support and involvement with this drive serves as a living example of what Sussex County, what makes Sussex County such a special place to live and work. This year, over 18 tons of food was collected and $4,600 in monetary donations, in addition to 284 turkeys and 50 hams. Since the first Stuff the Bus Drive, held in 2008, over 1 million pounds of food and over $100,000 has been donated to the Social Services Food Pantry to assist our residents in need. If anyone is in need of food for themselves or their family, please contact the Division of Social Services at 973-383-3600, or visit the agency at 83 Spring Street in Newton during their regular office hours, Monday through Friday, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Division of Senior Services, Center for Lifelong Learning, 8th Annual Open House at SCCC. The Division of Senior Services and Sussex County Community College will celebrate the 8th anniversary of their partnership to form the Center for Lifelong Learning on Friday, December 8th, from 12 to 1:45 p.m. Sussex County seniors are invited to enjoy a buffet lunch and have an opportunity to meet with staff and learn about the programs and services that are available through the Division of Senior Services, SCCC, and the Center for Lifelong Learning. This event is free, but pre-registration is required and space requested, and space is extremely limited. Please, please contact the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555, extension 1277, to register or obtain additional information. That's all I have today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Fantasia?
Thank you. I'm gonna start with the Sussex County Arts and Heritage Council. They have a couple events that are coming up. One is a flagship event, but another one is new. It's a nice family event that they're having at the gallery on Spring Street on Wednesday, December 6th. It is origami ornaments, making holiday ornaments, and it is a family-friendly event. It runs from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. The fee is $10 for members, non-members $15, and veterans are in for the member fee of $10. So that sounds like a fun family event. We also have the flagship event that you're familiar with. It's the Expose Photography Contest. So what they are doing is they are giving cash prizes again this year. There's some key dates, if you would like to enter your photography. December 13th is the deadline to submit, and digital submissions are accepted. They are going to hold a reception and awards ceremony on February 24th, and the categories are landscape, cityscape, architecture, fauna and flora, people and pets, still life, and then just an open. Now, this exhibition is open to all professional and amateur photographers, age 18 and up, and the entries must have been completed within the last three years. So if you would like to find out more information, I know it's super competitive to be part of that, please visit their website. They also have a pretty active social media profile on Facebook, so Sussex County Arts and Heritage Council. I'd like to share with you the health reports. We have a walk-in flu and COVID-19 vaccination clinics. They're offering this at the Office of Public Health Nursing in Wheatworth Road in Hamburg, Wednesday, November 29th, from 12 to 2:00, Wednesday, December 6th, from 12 to 2:00, December 13th, 12 to 2:00, and December 20th, from 12 to 2:00. So they're all run consecutive Wednesdays. The COVID-19 vaccines are free of charge, the flu vaccine is $25 per dose, and the high dose is $65 for the flu vaccine, payable by cash or check only. A lot of times, please consult with your doctor. High-dose vaccines are recommended typically for the elderly or those with underlying conditions against flu. Flu vaccines are free for individuals with Medicare Part B and any Blue Cross/Blue Shield plan. You can bring your insurance card, and again, the appointments are not required. Usually, flu clinics' appointments are required. For this one, they are not required. And public health nursing continues to provide homebound vaccinations if so needed, so please feel free to contact the Office of Public Health Nursing, 973-579-0570. So if we're talking about COVID, we are at a low-level green, but let's just talk about hospitalizations, because that's what we always care about here. October, there have been 49 hospitalizations so far, and there have been five active outbreaks reported, four in those long-term care facilities. So that was always a concern of ours. And again, outbreaks are when they can be traced directly back to being spread within the facility, not people going to work and perhaps bringing, you know, something from home, home to a flu from home. As far as flu updates, we are considered low in the Northwest Region and Sussex County. There's no confirmed influenza-associated pediatric deaths this season so far, which is great news. No RSV or influenza A outbreaks are reported in Sussex County. And then I want to touch again on the spotted lanternfly grant. You would think they would be dead, dead, dead with this weather, but I still see them frolicking about. So we do have traps available for residents. Again, we purchased 900 spotted lanternfly traps here at the county. We gave out 688. So traps are still available for those of us who live in Sussex County. You can call the Office of Mosquito Control, 940-5225, to register, and the office is located in Frankfurt Township near the Sussex County Main Library, if you are not familiar with that. The number of traps requested by residents has dramatically decreased, therefore, the office will now begin distributing traps to the municipalities. Myself, Commissioner Yardley, and Commissioner Hayden, and Commissioner Carney attended the New Jersey League of Municipalities Conference. It was jam-packed this year with sessions. I think it was probably one of the best. Ron, of course, was there, Christina was there, Lorraine was there, and, you know, you all split, you make your schedule as to the different, you know, sessions that you're gonna go to. My favorite was on open space and farmland preservation, some of the challenges that go around with that, but it's really tailored. It's not just things that have to do with high-density cities and whatnot. Incoming Commissioner-elect Jack DeGrue also was down there, you know, getting some information, but it was just a great conference this year. The League did a great, great job making it a diverse selection for us to be able to pick things that actually pertain to our region. So it was great. And our attorney was the senator, and that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you much. Deputy Director Yardley?
You know, I was listening to Commissioner Fantasia's report, and what a pleasure it was to listen to this report and not hear COVID, COVID reports, COVID deaths, number of people in the hospital. All of that has disappeared, and I just remember sitting here, and that was the majority of every, our life for a couple of years. So things have changed, and look better, I think. So I have a couple things. One, I have my old man glasses on. I attended the meeting at Sanderson Municipal Building, the... There was a meeting with the Conservation Commission, the Portoban Society, and they sent up one of the people to talk about what they want to do with the Delaware Water Gap. So I brought back the minutes, I brought back the maps, what their goals and objectives are. What they'd like to do is set up a committee of people and members of the public, and I did go up and speak. I said we would like to have, at a minimum, if this thing gets going, that we have at least two seats at the table to represent the whole county. Sanderson, I didn't realize, Sanderson is about 70% owned by the federal government, state, and various groups, so they really have a problem. Personally, and I did express this, and, you know, the board is upset, or any board member, you know, but I told them, I personally are fearful of these groups or these volunteer groups that sit to suddenly evaluate a piece of property that isn't causing us, Sussex County, any problems at this point. And I said, you take a look at the Highlands Act, you know, apples and oranges, I guess, because there's no housing there, but that was a volunteer group, and it was an advisory group, and it was appointment. Now, they make the rules and regulations, they take the property, they tell you what subject you can put in there, they tell you how big your house can be. Very lary of this. So there has been some conversation with Gottheimer and with Tom Kane to see if they get a piece of legislation to say, let it, leave it alone and stays as it is. You know, the board should consider looking into supporting that and trying to move that along, because as a resident and as a commissioner, I don't see the need to, if it's not a problem, I don't see the reason to fix it. And so I did express those, those things to the members and to the board, and told them, you know, we're here to help whatever they need. And so have this, so I'll, I have a couple, and give that to you. I did attend the League meeting, and so I attended a couple things. One was with technology, and I have to say, protection, they're doing a pretty good job, because the people that were there talking were really from industry and really don't, I felt they didn't understand what we, what we do, but we're really way ahead of the curve with protecting ourselves. And so the other thing is, if we want electric vehicles, the state, a couple other things, the state will give us grant money, grant funding, and I went to a couple health, health programs. I found it very interesting and had the ability, was able to talk to many different people. One of the things that I brought back, and I will pass out to the board, they can bring them tonight, was they have a free municipal cigarette waste recycling program. Now, I have nothing against anyone that smokes cigarettes that smokes it on, but the cigarette box, they're all over the place. So they actually have these little packets that they will give you, take your butts and dispose of them, and you can take this thing, tip the butt in there, fold it up and put it in your pocket, and it doesn't catch on fire. It's really unique, and those can be gotten from the state, some litter-free stuff. We get, we get a grant for clean communities. They were telling me there's more money available, so Ron, I'm gonna just give you this stuff. Okay. And this is international cybernetics. They work for the state of New Jersey, and what they do, they drive down the highways before they do a paving job, and they find what areas you should pave. So if you have a road that, I don't know how often we pave them, every 10 years, say, and you're gonna go paving, you may not have to pave the whole road, and I don't know whether that would save us some money, so I'm just gonna give them.
Pass it.
Yeah, just pass that around. And now for the important stuff. Division of Health, Public Health Nursing, Child Health Clinic, November 28th, 10 o'clock to 12:00. There's also a health clinic Tuesday, November 28th, at 2:00 p.m. to 4:00, at Public Health Nursing. And then there's December 2nd, 8:30 to 10:30 a.m., at the Office of Public Health Nursing, provides basic screening, blood work, the cost is $50, payable by cash or check only. Now, the environmental health inspections, there were a total of 1,337 inspections from January to October, end of October. 1,084 food establishments, 191 recreational bathing facilities, 24 animal facilities, two campgrounds, nine body yards, six tanning facilities, 21 youth camps, and 400 temporary food plants, and 54 fixed interviews. Rabies from October 1st to October 30th, this is just one month. There were 65 domestic or wild animal bites reported, 30 dogs, 15 cats, five raccoons, six skunks, two grandhogs. 10 animals were sent for testing, four animals tested positive, a bat from Franklin, a raccoon from Andover, a skunk from Franklin, a raccoon from Hardeston that was unsatisfactory, they couldn't get the results, so that's considered a positive report, and seven people were receiving rabies treatments. And that's my report.
I have a question. Now that, it seems like they were all like in that one little area, you got a couple in Franklin, one in Hardeston, or whatnot. What happens then when it's, you know, does anyone know that answer?
What, what happens with what?
Do they go about treating or canvassing any different if you see a concentrated area of rabies positive?
They'll, they'll make you aware, but you won't know when animals, you know, just because it's a raccoon don't mean all of it. It just means it's in the area, you have to be more aware of it.
What I'm saying, like, we weren't, I don't know, I'm a resident Franklin, and I didn't know when they, like, sound the alarm to say there's a pocket of...
Yeah.
I didn't know until, until the report.
They don't, they, we found that accidentally, we had one probably from a while ago, because we...
You know what, that's good, maybe the health department needs to do some, I don't know if they're doing it, maybe some press releases when these things happen.
If there's a cluster, because it just seems to be like a little cluster right in that little region right there.
Yeah, just do, I'll ask Christine.
Just to be vigilant with your pets and whatnot.
Because we, the county did make Channel 4 News 10 years ago, and they had four rabid boxes at that people. That was, I think that was Byram. So these things unfortunately happen.
Thank you, and thank you for going to Sanderson to have that presentation, and thank you to Sandy Hull, who puts a lot of effort into fighting this cause, so really, she does a great job. Sussex County DPW, they're training on a Falcon 6-ton asphalt hop hatcher, which we just got delivered. The DPW crews will train with the vendors to ensure proper usage of new specialized equipment, the purchase of the ass... The purchase of the asphalt hot box adds to the fleet of interchangeable bodies used on a hook lift truck. The hot box can hold up to six tons of asphalt. As the name implies, the hot box maintains the asphalt at optimal temperature for placement. This significantly improves the quality and durability of asphalt patching each year. On that note, we have a letter from a county resident. I just want to read it, because usually the things that get written about us are usually not that good, even if you don't live around here. So, "I am writing to, to you to express appreciation for the work done by Richard Vanderplugg regarding a new restaurant that is soon to open in Patagonia. We were in quite a time crunch with jobs that needed completion before the impending winter weather. Mr. Vanderplugg was courteous and professional and worked proficiently to assist us within our timeframe. Without his help, we would, we would have been put in a position to have to wait another six or seven, or month, six or so months to open. I would like the county of Sussex to recognize the efforts of this wonderful employee. Thank you for your time." That's nice to hear. I like to read things like that, again, because you don't always get that good stuff. I wanted to come forth with County Clerk. His income for the month of October is $253,429.22, bringing the year-to-date revenue for the county to $2,220,478.90. October was the office's highest revenue month due to numerous properties selling for over $1 million. That was the, please note that the 2023 budget submitted by his office was approximately $1,360,000. Current revenue surplus is $860,478.90. Property Alert, to bring you up to date, Property Alert System in October was 41 newly-registered people, and year-to-date is 628. Daniel's Law Registered in October was 10, and year-to-date is 483. So that service continues to grow. Just to kind of echo off what Commissioner Hayden says, as far as the commission, capital budget, we did have a very good meeting. I think we're going to get a lot done. As he said, we are way under budget from what we were the years prior. And the best thing that came out of it, again, goes to UPW or Engineering, was that we are very, we're almost caught up to getting our roads paved. The pave program is in very, very good shape, which as everybody knows, oil is very expensive, and that can go up and down as years progress, so that was nice to hear. And that's all I have for that. All right, moving on. Number 10, approval of consent agenda, there is none. Number 11 is approval of minutes. We have a regular meeting from November 8th, 2023. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from our regular meeting? So, Commissioner Hayden, you have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, any discussion? All favor, please say aye. Opposed, abstained, carries. Number 12, ordinance, there is none. Number 13, we have, 13 is appointments and/or resignations, we have two. A and B, Resolution A is acknowledging appointment of Lena Frank as a member. You want to do, we should do these separate, right?
It's up to you.
All right, we'll do them together, that's fine. I think everybody looked over this anyway, so. Acknowledge, acknowledging appointment of Lena Frank as a member of the Sussex County Community College Board of Trustees, said term to expire October 31st, 2025. And Resolution B is acknowledging appointment of Elizabeth Silverthorne as a member of the Sussex County Community College Board of Trustees, said term to expire December 31st, 2026. Motion to approve A and B.
I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Yardley. Commissioner Hayden, seconds. Any discussion on this? All right, all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries. Just for the record, there are two more seats, and the Commissioner Board plans on putting them out for applications. All right, so if there's anybody out there that would like to put their application in for the Board of Trustees, for the college, send them our, send them our way.
Are there any requirements? Can you refresh our memories about which are the governor's appointees, which are our appointees?
Yeah, the two that, we still have two that we need to appoint, and the governor has to appoint two.
And is there any guidance, just, you know, the tech school must be bipartisan? Is there guidance under the college for bipartisanship?
We can, we can send out the bylaws, so that you can review them if you'd like.
I'm just saying, for the benefit of the.
I could send it to the whole board, is what I'm saying, yeah.
That would be good. And, and council just again reminded that no one can be a current elected official and sit on the board.
Correct. All right, number 14, resolutions. We have a lot of resolutions. I get a motion to adopt resolutions A through C.C.
So moved.
Commissioner Space, have a second, please.
I just want, just one correction, it's A through C.C. with the removal of B.
Right, with the removal of B. Motion was, Commissioner Space, right?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Fantasia, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes. 15, awards of contract change orders bid. Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract change orders bids consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that the adoption of the said resolutions is and will further the public's interest. Motion to adopt resolutions A through G.
So moved.
Commissioner Hayden, have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes. 16 is financial, whoever bills list. Resolution A is the payment of bills list, November 21st, 2023. Motion to pay the bills list?
So moved.
Commissioner Space, have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes. 17, personnel, Resolution A is personnel agenda of 11/21/23. Motion to adopt personnel agenda A.
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, second?
Second.
Commissioner Space, seconds. Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes. Resolution B is personnel agenda from 11, of 11/21/23. Motion to adopt personnel agenda B.
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, have a second, please.
Second.
Commissioner Space, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes. Number 18 is the administrative report.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Yeah, we had a great activity with the food pantry, and it's, it is quite a bittersweet activity. The, the good part is that we have a good food pantry. The sad part is that it's such a need in the county for it. It's, it gets a lot of, of participation, but we're proud that we have a community that supports it as much as it does, and hopefully we can curb the need to have to come to a pantry, but that, that it gets a lot of work from them. Yes, in the League of Municipalities, for us that go down for training, we have whole licenses, we have to get continuing education credits for, to maintain our license, and this year, I have to echo everybody's opinion about it, it was very well put together. The speakers were very well prepared, they were experts in the subject matter, they made it, they made it interesting, and they made it very much worthy of all of us to go down and get as many classes as we could, because as, as Commissioner Fantasia said, they had a variety of, of different options that you could get, a multitude of areas covered. So that was, it was very well attended. Thank you from all of the administration to the commissioners for the budget hearings that we've had, the budget participation. I hope the commissioners now are getting a feeling that we, we have a real good team in place. I like the way they come together mutually and talk about sharing things now about how, oh, maybe, we might not have to buy that. If we use it this time, they can use it this time, and, and we're going to continue that effort as we go forward. But that's been well received and very appreciated from the, from the commissioners, from the administration, from the commissioners, and how that's been going. So I, I, like you, Commissioner Hayden, I think we're going to wrap this thing up a lot sooner than we did last year, for sure. So with that, that's all I have.
Ron, can you just go in to let the commissioners know what your plan is going forward before our agenda meetings with the department heads? I think everybody, I think it's a good idea, and I think everybody would like this.
Absolutely. We've, I've been kind of hit and miss of meeting with all the department heads. I'm not a, I'm not an administrator that's going to put people in a room to have a meeting only to set the agenda for the next meeting. That's not effective, it's not efficient. So what we're going to do, we'll start with the next agenda meeting, I'm going to have the department heads and some of the support staff, the IT director, the facilities director, and the purchasing agent in the room at 8:30, and we're going to go through this agenda line for line with the whole group. Make that part of the department head meetings, and then at 9:30, we roll into the agenda meeting with the commissioners to, to go through the same thing. Typically, I get the agenda on Friday. Monday is my day to go around the, the building. If I've got an issue with something that's gone on the agenda, I go to that person and, and talk about it, get it squared away before we get into the agenda meeting on Tuesday. So I thought it was a great opportunity to get them all in one room, let them hear from each other what everybody's doing on this agenda, make sure they understand why we go through it, and, and the, and the expectations of why it needs to be right when it gets to you guys. So that's what we're starting the 5th of, of December at the next agenda meeting.
I have one more question. Ron, can you please clarify for the public what is happening with our updates to minutes online? We seem to have, I don't know, a little bit of confusion, a little bit of misinformation from an out-of-state, for, let's just call them a prevaricator. It was a spreader of misinformation about what's happening with our minutes and when they're posted, and let's clarify that.
So what had happened was, we had advised that it was being put under a tab that was underneath all of the agenda items, it wasn't easily accessible. We've since removed all of that, and IT is very, very busy with their updates to 365 and everything that is being done. I've just gained access to that one section. So we'll be able to, and, and I, I've been a little bit busy this past week, and I just got the access, so we started doing that yesterday. They should all be updated soon, but some of them have been put into their own actual proper tab now.
And when, our audio, what I tend to do is the next day, when I go in, I listen to the audio in, so audio is posted, what, 24 hours?
Within 24 hours. Audio is always posted.
Does that explain how someone might have access to write about how they have no access for months, basically?
The audio is up there, yeah.
Thank you.
Within 24 hours.
Okay.
Because that's, that's a separate section.
Understood.
So things are going on, too. We've got a, we've, we've implemented a new agenda management system, so that's all new. We're getting, we're getting, working the bugs out of that. And again, our IT, because of the cyber protections and moving, gravitating to Windows 365, that's a lot of activity. So we've been very busy. Apologize for the mishap of that, but we are, we're only going to get better from it.
Thank you.
All right. 19, county council. Nothing to add today. All right. Number 20, unfinished business?
I have one thing of unfinished business. I had asked Christina to share with us, you know, the, the student who made that beautiful pin, Nicholas.
Oh, it was very nice.
That was absolutely amazing. I mean, we're not supposed to have favorites, but that pin was just outrageous. I also asked to hear from the sixth-grade students, and of course, close to my heart being, you know, in a middle school, the, the students that wrote the essays, and they're very short, and I just wanted to share the two winning essays. The first was written by Brooklyn Davis from Frankfurt School in sixth grade. Why are we saluting Sussex County military veterans? When I think of veterans, some of these words come to mind: strength, courage, pride, role model, respect, and selflessness. It's important that we salute all veterans, because we would not have the freedoms that we have today if it were not for their sacrifices. They left their homes and their families and put their lives on the line for us. Some even lost their lives fighting for us. So how do we even begin to show them our appreciation? Saluting our veterans is a way to say thank you for all that they have done for our country. It's a way to show a small token of our gratitude for the enormous sacrifices they made for us. I encourage everyone to take a moment to let a veteran know how much you appreciate them by saying thank you, buying them a coffee, listening to their story. Let them know you were proud to be an American because of people like them.
Wow.
And the second winner was also from sixth-grade Frankfurt Township. It must be in the water, because those kids did a great job.
Good place to live.
Why are we thanking veterans in Sussex County? There are many reasons why we salute Sussex County military veterans. A major reason is that they protected our country and each and every one of us. They protected us by putting their own lives at stake by going to war. Military veterans supported our country and fought for our freedom. Now it's our turn to support and salute them. Without our brave veterans, our county wouldn't be where it is today. These brave men and women are very special people that supported us, and we should thank them in any way possible. I think how brave they are by flying jets or being away at sea and all the sacrifices they made. I'm sure it wasn't easy being away from their own families to protect ours. Our Sussex County military veterans are very deserving of our support and appreciation.
And what was that one's name?
That was Carter Bambara.
Okay. I don't, I don't know Carter, but I do know Brooklyn, and she, her family is very vested in the post, in a branch of a post. So I'm sure this is, you know, it's learned, you know, your parents talk about it, and how important our veterans are, so. Very nice.
I just thought they were great.
That pin was excellent. I know, I gave him out at, at our post there where her parents are members of, and everybody was, they was very happy with that pin compared to, you know, past years.
Wonderful.
Very nice. Anybody else on unfinished? All right, moving on to 21, which is new business. Is there any new business? No? All right. 22, public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone and state your name and municipality for the record. Motion to open the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Commissioner Hayden, have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space, any discussion? All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries. Anyone on agenda? All right, seeing none. Motion to close the floor for public comment, return to regular business?
So moved.
Commissioner Hayden, have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space, any discussion? All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries. Number 23 is reminders. Please check the county's website at www.sussex nj.us for meeting schedules. Any other reminders? You know, I usually take the reins on that, but is there any other reminders? Because sometimes I don't get them all.
Just a reminder that the county offices will be closed Thursday and Friday for the Thanksgiving holiday.
Okay, we got that? No, I'll probably call you on Friday.
Okay.
We do have an executive session that was amended, which is 24, and Christina will take over from there.
Providing for an executive closed session not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of NJ SA 10:4-12 at SEC, whereas the subject matter is about to be discussed may be excluded from the public portion of the meeting by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners as an exception to the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to NJ SA 10:4-12B, and whereas it appears necessary for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss such matters in executive session. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, in accordance with the provisions of NJ SA 10:4-12B and NJ SA 10:4-13, that the Board at this time enter into an executive session from which the public shall be excluded, and be it further resolved that the general nature of the subjects to be discussed relate to the following items authorized by NJ SA 10:4-12B as designated below. Item number seven, matters relating to litigation, negotiations, and the attorney-client privilege.